Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 21st, 2021 Legislative Session of the Wycomico County Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the opening prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. You may join us.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Like he hath come, the holy Spirit come. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us other trespasses, as we have those trespass against us in these times of temptation. Thy love is the king.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everlasting justice for all.
Ms. Harley?
Good morning, Council President, Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. We have six items on the consent agenda this morning. We have the legislative minutes from September the 7th, 2021, open work session minutes from August the 3rd, 2021 pertaining to the council goals for fiscal year 2022, open work session minutes from August the 3rd, 2021, on the proposed hotel or multifamily residential property tax credit, open work session minutes from August the 17th on the discussion of premium pay from the American Rescue Plan, we have open work session minutes from August the 17th on the West Metro Project Planning Funding, and open work session minutes from August the 17th on the one-time sign-one bonus for eligible workers.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Consent agenda passed unanimously. Mr. McCain, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I have a, just for the public's notice, I have a continuing education class today. Unfortunately, it starts at 11:00, so it's something I have to do once a year, so I have to leave a little bit early, so I just want to give people a heads up. I didn't want to offend anybody if they're speaking and I happen to get up.
All right. At this time, we have a proclamation to recognize World Rivers Day. Mr. Jared Parks, Land Programs Manager at the Lower Shore Land Trust. Proclamation will be offered by Council Member Josh Hastings.
Our proclamation of World Rivers Day, what we have written here is whereas celebrated on the 4th Sunday in September, World Rivers Day is a global event that started in 2005 in celebration of the world's waterways, and whereas this day awareness highlights the many values of our rivers, strives to increase public awareness, and encourages public, or improve stewardship of all rivers around the world, and whereas, among many other benefits, rivers provide food and nutrition, support for transfer of goods, provide recreation, support in need of habitat, and important flora and fauna, and whereas World Rivers Day was launched by the United Nations in 2005 and now spans across more than 70 countries. Now therefore, Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive hereby proclaim September 26, 2021 as World Rivers Day, and Wycomico County encourage all citizens to celebrate our local rivers and tributaries. Done this 21st day of September, signed by the Acting County Executive and all members of the county council. And we have Jared Parks with Lower Shore Land Trust. Jared, if you'd like to say anything?
We appreciate you recognizing World Rivers Day. We love our partnership with the county, and right now, we've got our River Rally event going on, which concludes on World River Day, and we hope everybody gets to participate and get out and enjoy your fabulous natural resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, Mr. Hastings. Now, we have a proclamation to recognize National Recovery Month with Ms. Michelle Hardy, Director of the Behavioral Health Authority. Good morning. This is proclamation for National Recovery Month. Whereas National Recovery Month is held every September to educate Americans for substance abuse treatment and mental health services that can enable those with a substance and/or mental health disorder to recover and live a healthy, rewarding life, and whereas Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery and reinforces that behavioral health is essential, treatment is effective, and people can do recover, and whereas millions of Americans' lives have been transformed through recovery, and Recovery Month provides a vehicle to celebrate these accomplishments, speaking about the gains made by those in recovery, and sharing success stories helps increase awareness and furthers a greater understanding about the disease of mental and substance use disorders. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive hereby proclaim September as National Recovery Month in Wycomico County, and encourage all citizens to celebrate those who are in recovery and give support and hope for those struggling with substance abuse disorder, done this day, the 21st day of September, 2021, signed by the Acting County Executive and the entire Wycomico County Council.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Sure. Thank the county council for this proclamation, and we are doing a lot of activities here in Wycomico County related to recovery, both for substance use and mental health, and we see a lot of purple around town, so that's because it is Go Purple Month, but we just want to thank you for your support as we continue to support those that struggle with mental health or substance use issues, and for family members and friends who have, you know, lost loved ones due to those illnesses, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 100-2021. This is to amend the fiscal year 2022 capital budget and fiscal year 2022 through 2026 capital improvement plan to decrease the Department of Corrections roofing project funding and increase the Department of Emergency Services funding for the installation of fencing around the emergency services generator in the amount of $39,978. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in The Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this morning at 10:00 a.m., and we have Mr. David Shipley here, Director of Emergency Services, and Mr. Charles Meckel, Deputy Director of Finance, if there are any questions.
Okay. This time, we're going to open the floor to the public hearing for Resolution Number 100-2021. Do you have any public comments? If so, please state your name and your county of residence. Do you have any public comments for this resolution? All right. With that said, we're going to close the floor to this public hearing. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 100-2021?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. McCain. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holloway. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 100-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution passes unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Okay, next on the agenda is an update, a COVID-19 update by Lori Brewster, the Public Health Officer.
Well.
So, it's been a while since I've provided an update to all of you.
It is.
You may have seen that the county's positivity rate continues to climb. We have seen a slight decrease in our positivity rate over the past couple of days, and I just am hopeful that we will continue on that trajectory. Right now, we have the fourth highest positivity rate in Maryland. Our positivity rate today is 11.57%. Maryland's is 4.44%, so that is a significant elevation over what the state's average is. Our case rate continues to rise as well, and I provided both the positivity rate and the case rate in the graphs for you. The state's case rate today has declined to 20 per 100,000, and we are at 46.05 per 100,000 individuals. We have a significant number of outbreaks occurring in the community. I will say that at, on Friday, we had 30 separate outbreaks occurring. We're down to 27 today. As you can imagine, having 27 separate outbreaks in the community is keeping staff very busy because of the volume of contact tracing that's occurring. And the health department's staff is the ones that have to do the contact tracing for all outbreaks, as opposed to the state's contact tracing group. Because of our increase in positivity rate, we have increased our testing capability. We had been testing two hours a week, and that seemed to be more than enough, and now we are testing two days a week, anywhere from three to six hours, depending upon need. So on the vaccine administration front, we are hoping to get our percentage fully vaccinated up. We have, these numbers are as of the other day, 47,954 Wycomico County residents vaccinated. We are the fourth lowest vaccinated county in the state, so you see a comparison there, the fourth highest in our positivity and case rate, and the fourth lowest vaccinated. We have been doing a lot of outreach into the community, trying to deal with some vaccine hesitancy issues. I will say that we have seen an uptick in the numbers of individuals seeking vaccination within the past couple of weeks, which is a good sign. And to date, we have 52,273 individuals that have had at least one dose of the vaccine, so they're not fully vaccinated, but they're on their way to be fully vaccinated. With that being said, we are reaching out into the community. Today, we have a mobile vaccine clinic going on at, I think it's today, at Riverside Apartments. We are taking our vaccine distribution on the road, as well as providing vaccine distribution at the Civic Center and at the Fritz Building, and I am forever grateful to the county and to the Civic Center staff for allowing us back in the Civic Center, because if you can imagine, we will be doing boosters, we are doing boosters right now, or third-dose vaccines, and so that's going to increase the volume, and we don't have the parking capacity at the Fritz Building for people to stay and wait 15 minutes or 30 minutes, depending upon the need, post-vaccination, so having the ability to use the Civic Center again, we are very grateful. And I will take, or entertain any questions.
Do we have any questions? Ms. Holloway?
Of the positive cases you're experiencing, has any of them been vaccinated?
We have had some individuals that are positive, that have been vaccinated. The bulk of the positive cases are the unvaccinated individuals in the community. I will say that according to the data that we're getting, we have seen an increase in hospitalization, but that is for primarily the unvaccinated individuals as well.
So the cases would be milder for the folks that have been vaccinated, if they do show up positive?
For the most part, we are even seeing people that are positive, that have been vaccinated, that are asymptomatic, they are presenting with absolutely no symptoms as well.
Is there any certain age group that's showing, showing up more than others, I guess?
Well, I can't say that there's one showing up more than others, but because sports and schools are back in session, we are seeing an uptick in the number of school-age children that are positive, and I think we've had over 170 positive cases since schools started, and want to rephrase that, the school start date is actually the date that they begin preparing for sports, so that would have been in August, so they've had over 170 positive cases since that date.
And that's just in the schools?
Correct.
May I, do you know which level?
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Kindergarten through 12, which?
Yes, it's all age groups.
Are they presenting with symptoms, or are they asymptomatic, or?
Both. Yep.
Ms. Hastings, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to know if you or the office, your office has a demographic profile of individuals who are unvaccinated right now, in order to then lead to a targeted campaign in order to then vaccinate?
We sure do. We get equity updates, vaccine equity updates on a weekly basis. It is done by zip code, it is done by race, sex, as well as poverty level, and that's why we reach out into certain areas to try to get to the unvaccinated individuals. Because the 21801 and the 21804 are biggest populations, that seems to be the areas in which we have the least percentage vaccinated, and that's why when the National Guard was assisting with some vaccination efforts, they were targeting the city.
Mr. Cannon?
Thanks for being here. A question I have, you say 11.4%. How many would you say, let's say in the last month or the last week, how many would you say that would be in actual numbers? Is it 100? Is it, first of all, I think maybe it would help too for the public if you were to tell us what the website is, because I think there's a very good website where you can get all the demographics correct and the data.
That's correct. It's on the Maryland Department of Health coronavirus website, and I will say that our data for this week has not come in because the state's data system was taken down to do some revisions, but just for the week of 9/5 to 9/11, we had 458 new cases added to our case, positive case rate, which was up from 436 the week before. If we remember, there was a little bit of a decline during July, and we really felt a reprieve because there was one week we only had 10 new cases, so we were very grateful for that time, that week. I actually sent my staff on vacation so that they could get some much-needed rest, but the numbers continue to rise, and our focus at this point, since we cannot reach every positive case and every contact, is to focus on the positive cases. And just to remind you, the state's contact tracing division is called NORC, and what happens is they reach out to every positive case, and they will attempt to call one time, and then those cases get transferred to the health department for us to try to find these people, to let them know that they need to isolate. Most people are not going to answer their phone one after one call, so we're getting the bulk of those cases. So staff is working seven days a week to try to reach people. I would like to tell the public, if you get a call from Maryland Department of Health or the Wycomico County Health Department, please answer your phone so that we can try to decrease the transmission rate of the COVID in the community. Even the CDC has Wycomico County listed as having an extremely high transmission rate of COVID right now, which has all of us concerned about the medical resources that are going into battling COVID-19.
When you say 450, right, that sounds like a very huge number, and it would make most people think that it's time to run to the woods and hide. Of the 450, Councilman Ackley asked a similar question. Do you have an idea of how many of those 450 were asymptomatic? How many of them evidently turned into critical cases? How many of those became, unfortunately, may have become a death? Do we know exactly where that is?
I would have to pull that up on the computer, in the computer system, but I can tell you that we, Wycomico County, were experiencing at least one death a day for the past couple of weeks. Over the weekend, there were four COVID-related deaths that occurred of Wycomico County residents. There are a significant volume of people that are asymptomatic, and we're seeing that, and that's not something that we were not expecting, particularly with the increase in activity in our community. There's no emergency orders in effect for, you know, social distancing, no masking requirements, so we were anticipating that. But to give you a quantifiable number of the 458, I don't have that right at my fingertips.
Ms. Hastings?
I know that a lot of the deaths that have occurred, of course, we did hear this past week, it was one in every 500 Americans, now more than one in every 500 Americans has died from COVID. Most of the deaths have occurred usually when a particular medical facility is overrun, and I know in Wycomico County, this week, we're going to likely hit our 200th death from, 200 citizens of Wycomico will die this week, and we've now had, I think it was over 17 in the last month, people died. Do we have an issue with any of our health facilities, any of our hospitals here in the region that it's adding to that death count?
The hospital has bed capacity, and I will say that that's never been an issue because Title Health actually built expansion capability into their Hollowell Conference area, and they have not reopened that for COVID patients. But I will say that staffing is always an issue in the medical field, and, you know, every organization in Wycomico County, as well as across the country, is experiencing significant staffing shortages that could affect the ability to adequately care for the general population and then COVID-19 individuals that are hospitalized on top of that.
All right.
One more question.
Do you have a comment, Ms. Ackley?
Thanks for being here, Lori. I did, I wanted to ask you, do pediatricians, do they have the vaccine available in their office, or primary care doctors? And if not, do you see that in the near future?
So basically, most of the pediatricians don't have the capacity to manage the Pfizer vaccine, nor do they have the volume. The health department has the capacity, and we receive shipments of the Pfizer vaccine, which is the vaccine that's approved for the population in question, and what we have been doing is offering to store the vaccine, and if they want a vaccine shipment, they can ask us, and we will apportion them the vaccine in order to vaccinate their own population. We would rather do that than the health department have to be the vaccination site of choice. So we are, we're calling it, and the state's calling it, a hub-and-spoke model, and so we're getting shipments of 1,170 doses of the Pfizer vaccine when we request the vaccine, and we will distribute it out to any providers that wish to provide vaccine to their population.
I think that, I think that will really, that will ease some minds on getting the vaccine. I know I get text messages about the flu vaccine being ready to bring my kids to the clinic, so I think that'll, that'll be a good thing.
Yes. All they have to do is let us know that they want some vaccine, and we'll provide it to them.
Thanks.
Ms. Holloway?
So when you provide, when you provide that vaccine to doctors' offices, whatever, do they provide you with who receives that vaccination so you can put it in your records and all that? This, I know if you lose your card, as I did, you told me to just go over and get a new one, and it was readily available. I was surprised that it went so smoothly. Is that information passed on, or like when Walgreens does vaccinations, does that, is that submitted back to you, or?
So if a provider wants to provide vaccine, they have to register as a COVID vaccine provider, and that's a very easy process, and they have to document the individual that's receiving the vaccine in IMUNET, which is the state's database, and that's how we're able to pull up where and who had what vaccine. So the short answer is yes, they have to report that, but they don't have to report it to us, they have to put it in the state's database.
All right. Ms. Brewster, I want to thank you and your staff for working so diligently on COVID and the opioid epidemic, and I think the COVID outbreak has kind of overshadowed the opioid epidemic, and the opioid epidemic is still here, so thank you for doing that. One question I have was, we were told that the state may be utilizing the Civic Center up through September, and I know you're glad to get back over to the Civic Center. Do you know why they vacated early?
The mass vaccination clinics, the volume of individuals attending those clinics was declining all across the state, so they decided that they could pull out before the deadline of the contract because there was not the need. They do not anticipate restarting the mass vaccination clinics because of boosters either, so I don't believe that there will be a need for contract leasing or renting of space other than the little bit of space the health department uses.
I was wondering if that was the reason, because riding by there numerous times, it did look like the parking lot was empty except for the staff. And I have another question. About a month or so ago, I kept getting a phone call from a Maryland number about, it was like a survey about the, I guess, the vaccination. Were you familiar with that phone call?
There's a lot of call centers that are calling people to try to determine why they went and got the vaccine, why they may not have gotten the vaccine. They're doing surveys related to vaccine access and vaccine hesitancy.
Well, the lady didn't sound like she was from Maryland, so she asked me what my name was, and I said Larry Hogan, and she didn't budge, so I knew then something wasn't right. And then she asked me where I lived, and I said, well, you called me, where do you live? She said, we're not allowed to tell you, and I said, well, I'm not allowed to tell you where I live, so I didn't continue with that survey, so. When you get a blind phone call like that, it's kind of sketchy, and it's difficult to give out personal information, so they didn't call back after that, so. Do we have any more questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. You mentioned staffing shortages. Is there, in your office or whatever, is there being anything done to reduce the staffing shortages?
Absolutely. We have just contracted with a state contracting agency to provide some nursing staff so that my staff don't have to work 80 hours a week. Some of them have been working 60 and 70 hours a week, and we need to help them at this point. We also are advertising for some additional individuals, and we've also gone to the temp agencies to fire on some staffing to assist as well.
So other than maybe overtime, has there been any bonuses paid to retain people or anything like that?
So the state does not provide any bonuses. The state also does not allow me or any health officer to pay overtime to my staff. They get comp time for every hour that they work, and as you can imagine, you can't use the comp time that you've earned. We have many people that have well over eight to 10 weeks of comp time that they have to take at some point. We have asked numerous times of the secretary if we could use some of the recovery plan dollars to pay our staff for the hours that they work above and beyond their 40-hour work week, and we have been advised that the answer to that is no. So it's not because we haven't tried, because we've even written letters to the secretary and the deputy secretary requesting that, but apparently, it's with the Department of Budget and Management that Budget and Management that is advising them against that.
I believe I heard you say you gave your staff a break or a vacation or something. I'm sure that was much needed, so they appreciated that, I'm sure. Do you have any more questions or comments? Ms. Harley?
I just have one quick question. I know right now the Delta variant is the most popular variant. Are there any other variants that, out there, that we should be concerned about?
Well, we have another variant, not in Wycomico County yet, knock on wood, it's the Mu variant. We will continue to see variants as long as there's a significant population that's unvaccinated.
What about the vaccines for that new variant? Do they provide any protection?
Yes.
They do? Okay.
Ms. Harley, thank you for bringing that Delta variant up, because after doing a lot of reading, it made me question the, the test for COVID. And I've read that when you test for COVID, you don't know if you have the Delta variant or not. Is that true?
That's correct. What occurs is when, particularly in the vaccinated population, the testing goes into the state lab and into a couple of other labs where they test specifically for the variant. They are not testing every test that occurs for the which variant that the individual has.
And it seems like the Delta variant is getting a lot of blame.
Yes, because it is more transmissible at this point, or believed to be more transmissible.
All right, thank you for answering that. Are there any more questions or comments for Ms. Brewster? Ms. Brewster, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you again. Ms. Harley?
The next item for business is Resolution Number 101-2020. This is authorizing the Acting County Executive to allocate grant funds from the American Rescue Plan to premium pay for positions in the Department of Corrections, Emergency Services Department, and the Sheriff's Office. And we have Mr. John Posoda, our Acting County Executive, and Ms. Jackie Curry here, Director of Human Resources.
Okay, need a motion to approve Resolution Number 101-2021. Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion? Who was that for the second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Mr. Posoda?
Good morning, and I would like to echo the council's appreciation for everything that Lori Brewster does in her department. She touches an amazing amount of people in what she does, her and her staff, and again, thank you for recognizing that, and I appreciate everything that she does. I don't, we covered quite a bit of ground at the last meeting, so if there's any questions or...
Sure, do we have any questions or comments?
Pretty straightforward request, I believe, from Mayor's side.
Any questions or comments?
Can I, I sent a memo, I don't know how many of the council members got it yesterday evening. When I looked, excuse me, when I looked over the bill, I thought it really should bring in some of the detail that Mr. Posoda had raised in his comments. And County Attorney Wilbur, after a discussion, agreed that that probably would be appropriate. So they, I thought that Mr. Illuminati was going to be here today, and they were going to have an Exhibit A.
He's in the audience.
Oh, he is. There's going to be an Exhibit A to be attached, and it's basically either Mr. Posoda's memo from before or something with the same basic content explaining how it's going to be.
All right.
And I don't know, do you have that?
Mr. Illuminati?
Good morning, thank you. I do not have a copy of that, but I will make sure that it gets supplemented to the final legislative bill if it passes. It covers all the basics that Acting County Attorney, County Executive Posoda talked about, how the different groups are currently approved for this, and some groups are not, obviously, as has been stated during the work sessions. As the groups that are approved to receive the additional compensation come forward, it will be reviewed for legal guidance and recommendation.
This is a hearing to vote on this? It would be nice if we had that ahead of time.
If it can be tabled for a few moments, I'll go back to the office and print a copy.
Are you going to use his?
I was just going to use.
I've got that. He might have it too.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Ms. Cannon?
Thank you.
We received a message, an email, I don't know, I may have forwarded to... Received an email, I may have forwarded it to you, County Executive Posoda. It was in reference to the lump sum of $1,500, whether or not that in itself could exceed a $13 an hour maximum. I wasn't aware of any of this, it's just an email I picked up this morning, actually. I think it came in late. So I was concerned to make sure that in filing all the guidelines, that if that were a particular guideline, that we were well within our boundaries, so there wasn't any violation of the, on the federal level.
I have not seen that email.
If I, I can maybe speak to that.
Sure.
The problem, part of the problem is that the Act refers to the HEROES Act. The HEROES Act is pretty detailed. The regulations in the HEROES Act are not exactly the same. So the regulations say up to $13 an hour, the HEROES Act says $13 an hour, but it's over a period of time. So if you're, and you can pay for things that have already happened if they worked through COVID. So I would think that the Personnel Department would have to keep track of where these people had enough hours at a certain period to get the full amount.
The other question that was also noted in the email was if the premium pay increases an employee's total pay above 150% of either Maryland or Wycomico County's average annual wage for all occupations, then special explanation justification has to be furnished to the Treasury Department. Again, I don't know the validity of any of this, but...
That's accurate.
That is accurate. So, and it just came in more recently. I would like to see this moved forward as quickly as possible, because I'm in favor of it. I want to make sure that before the final steps are taken from either your department or from the Finance Department or from HR, that please make sure we're taking this into consideration so that we don't become, you know, we don't overstep our boundaries.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Yes, and I'm pretty sure I forwarded it to you this morning, I believe. If not, I'll forward it to you again. That's all I have. Is that motion to table, Mr. Cannon? No, it is not.
Yeah, there's just some fairly simple wording that was going to be added that would say pursuant to the Act, we're going to name the Act, and then say, and as more particularly set forth in Exhibit A. So that language would be added also to the bill, just simply to bring Exhibit A into the, into the bill. This is Exhibit A, which you've all seen, this was presented before, it just lays out what they had in mind.
Ms. Holloway?
Do you want comments?
Yes.
Now? First of all, I don't, I don't want to vote against anybody getting a bonus pay, whether it's Department of Corrections, Sheriff's Office. But the problem is, for me, is there are a lot of other people that were put in the same situation that these employees were. I don't know how we pick and choose which people were most at risk. There's been a lot of banner going back and forth. I was asked whether I didn't understand what morale is, and I think I've got a better understanding of it now when this, when this, when this came out. So a lot of folks have contacted me that work for the county. The ones that contacted me mostly were the people that, of course, didn't, didn't qualify for this, but were doing the same job and at the same risk as the ones that did qualify. I guess one defining moment for me was when I was contacted by somebody that did qualify for it, but said they didn't think it was fair because there were people that were at risk as much as they were or more. The Department of Corrections, the Department of Corrections, the employee problem there has been going on a long time, not just through the COVID. I mean, we've been hearing about that for a number of years. It might be worse now than it was before. There's a situation right now, and I don't know how we alleviate these problems, but there's a situation right now with somebody in Public Works that was vaccinated, happened to be working with somebody that was unvaccinated, whose close family member has COVID, they tested positive, now they're on quarantine for 10 days. So that person was put at risk. However, there's nothing in, in this to give them any extra money. So I can't support this the way it's set up right now, and from what I'm hearing from the attorneys, there's still a lot of questions, and even from other council members, so.
Can you go to a mic, please? It's hard enough to hear without the, with the mask on.
The, we were going to add language that says it will be as passed pursuant to the Act, the American Rescue Act, as it may be amended from time to time, simply because right now the regulations are interim final. The, the time to comment on the interim final is already passed, so they should be final pretty soon, and there may be no changes, but put that in there, and then say, and then say, as more particularly set forth in Exhibit A attached here to and made a part hereof. It just brings in the, the memo that Mr. Posoda had made before, because this doesn't, the bill doesn't address some of the particulars of who's getting it and things like that, and this does. And it then ties it to the Act, so they, they'll be following the Act.
Okay.
That's just my suggestion, you know.
Ms. Ackley? Hold on a second. What was that?
Mr. McCain's participating by speakerphone rather than Zoom, apparently there must have been some technical glitches with the Zoom.
Okay, can we?
Speakerphone.
Can we put him to the mic?
Yes.
A quick comment I have, yeah, I think Mr. Mitchell's language covers any of the concerns, the, to address Mr. Holloway's comment, you know, all of us are concerned about other departments and so forth and eligibility, but these funds, the ARP funds, if the executive office and their staff is confident that these could be utilized, individuals that have been stated, as far as corrections, I'll just state this, I mean, the correction situation is just a desperate situation, but three more resigned yesterday. Our last meeting, prior to our last meeting, five more resigned. I mean, there are 26 down at the moment, and that number gets worse literally by the week. And at the end of the day, I mean, this is unfortunately not a whole lot of money comparatively to what the state, for example, is offering correction officers. So I'd sort of like to see us move forward with this, because I think time is of the essence.
Ms. Ackley?
So I want to, I want to thank the county executive, I appreciate what you're trying to do, and the retaining of public safety staff is very important. But I also appreciate what Ms. Brewster just said before this, and getting locum tenen staff or temporary staff, that's not going to last, and you're going to start burning people out. And we just heard that our COVID rate is on the uptick. We need people out there getting vaccinated. And I just, I can't support this giving it to one department and not another department. I would like to see if there's possibly some way we can do this for the Department of Corrections out of the general fund or some other way that we can compensate them to retain them.
All right, Mr. Hastings, did you have a comment?
I just want to make sure that I have it right in my own head, in addition to, to the folks that are listening. So I think everyone in the, all the members of the county council believe that we should get pay, premium pay to use, these are federal dollars specifically allocated, and to as many people that qualify as humanly possible. The question at hand with the Acting County Executive's office is whether or not, who qualifies or who doesn't qualify, because we do not yet, at this point, have clarity from the federal government as to who actually, which employees would qualify. So in the meantime, we do have a list of people, a list of positions that we think would most certainly, you know, knock on wood, most certainly would qualify, we're the most confident that they would qualify. Now, you know, I would say, of course, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This is a situation which we are in dire straits. As Councilman McCain has just mentioned, you know, we've lost, we now have 26 people down in the corrections.
At least 27.
At least 27, which, corrections, you know, that's a pretty important position, space. So out of all, the entire, all of these positions, all of these individuals who work for the county have gone over and above to try to make sure that, you know, that they are, they are doing as much as they can during a very, very tough time. These last year and a half and plus has been really hard. But we can't immediately go out and give money to anyone and everyone, really, nearly, because, you know, just because they're an employee of the county, we have to do it given the money that, resources that we have available to us. So at this point in time, we do know what is available, and I'm sure the Acting County Executive's office and Ms. Curry and others are going to continue to make sure that they are doing their best due diligence to, to find out, to get greater clarity from the federal government, which is hard to do. We should have that pretty soon. So in the meantime, I would think, for my own clarity, and I'm stating all this so that'll make sure everybody's on the right page, it seems to be that every council member wants to support every county employee who can get these extra bonuses with federal funds, but the question at hand is whether or not we have guidance from the federal government, because we don't want to turn around and give money away, and then, you know, and then two months later, we find out from the federal government, oh, you actually owe us $700,000. So, or something along those lines. So I'm putting that out there for clarity for myself and then for everyone else to... Thank you.
Ms. Hastings, you brought up some good points. Mr. Cannon, do you have another statement?
Yeah, I mean, I can agree, this, this resolution isn't being done in exclusion of all the other departments at all. This is just simply the very first step that we feel very sure that we can take in order to start to address these problems, and as Josh said, in the most critical areas right now. So it's a first step. It's not, you know, it's not an end to all the means, there's further to go, but Mr. Mitchell, sorry, thank you. Mr. Mitchell, I'm assuming that you had proposed an amendment, is that correct?
Yeah, I've actually done it.
Okay.
It's very procedural, it's simply to draw some detail into the Act and also to make it clear that it's based on the Act as it may change, because of what you're saying. If they do come back and have to refund it, you only have 120 days to pay it.
So here's what I'm going to do, based on trying to read your writing. I would make an amendment to state as such, to be, to be incorporated into the sentence prior to the actual listing of, of amounts of funding. It would state, "From the American Rescue Plan, as it may be amended from time to time, for premium pay in the Department of Corrections, Emergency Services Department, Sheriff's Office to be utilized for the cost of salaries and Social Security as..."
Or particularly?
More particularly set forth in Exhibit A attached and made a part hereof and is approved as follows.
Right.
So that would be the amendment.
So, Mr. Cannon, you're offering the amendment?
Yes.
Do we have a second for that amendment?
I'll second that.
Mr. Hastings offered the second. Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Sheriff's, nay. Passes. Mr. Holloway?
Another question. We were at SWED meeting last week, and it was stressed very importantly from the folks that's doing the Water and Sewer Plan, that this American Rescue Plan money be preserved for that. And of course, my statement was that, you know, there's already plans to use some of it for other, other things, the salary. already plans to use some of it for other, other things. The salary, of course, salary program. I ask Mr. Hitchens to do a follow-up on what we have left in our budget as far as monies from vacancies and unfilled positions. He came up with somewhere over $600,000 for a 10-week period. And I guess my question is, why wouldn't we not be using that money instead of going to the American Rescue Plan?
Mr. Posoda?
The American Rescue Plan calls for the use of this money for this purpose, and that's what we have proposed.
The salaries that are budgeted.
Yes, by, by department. So if you, if you look at that on its face, we're asking other departments to take care of this need in these two departments. If their salary survey, if there's, if there's salary savings, they can be used within the department towards the end of the year. There can be use for that, for that savings somewhere in that department, somewhere throughout the year. So it's kind of safeguarding that for those departments. Again, the American Rescue, the ARPA funds allow this to happen for this.
I understand they allow it to happen, but I'm.
That's what we're proposing.
My statement, my question was, is it, we could use that money, it'd just have to be transferred. And of course, it'd have to be transferred later in the year, because we can't transfer right now. But.
Yes, we could use it, those funds, we could use reserves, we could use the American Rescue Plan funds, which is what we're proposing.
Right. I do want to make a comment, and I agree with Mr. Hastings, Mr. Cannon, Ms. Ackley, and Mr. Holloway. I think all of us have received a lot of phone calls and text messages, and it's to the point now, I'm getting anonymous text messages. The number's up there, but there's no name. But there is a lot of concern. I do believe our employees need this pay, deserve this pay. But I feel like not paying other employees and not having a plan for the other employees, I feel it's somewhat divisive. And I do know one of the departments that is losing employees is not losing because of money. I've been told that by several employees. So it's, it's very concerning, and I do feel it's very divisive. But I do appreciate offering premium pay to certain employees, but I think it needs to go to all employees. Any more comments? All right. All in favor, Resolution Number 101-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I'm sorry?
Say.
I thought I heard a aye when you're supposed to say nay. Okay.
Bill.
Bill said aye. Okay, thank you. That was kind of late. All right. Chair votes nay, so it passes four to three.
I do have one other comment.
I would like to see in about five weeks, four weeks, if there's any numbers on how many people are still resigning. So I'd like to see if we have any results from this.
And I would also like to see a plan on how we're going to compensate other employees, if possible. Thank you.
Mr. President, just to clarify, that was adopted as amended, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Didn't the amendment pass five to two?
Four to three.
I thought the amendment passed, and then the.
The amendment passed four to three, and this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution passed four to three.
I'm sorry.
Is that correct, Ms. Hurley?
Yes.
All right. Anything else on that? All right, moving on?
Next, for your consideration, is Resolution Number 102-2021. This is to authorize the retitling of a staff position within the state's attorney's office at the request of the state's attorney, to enhance the mission of the office and duties of leadership due to the complications created by COVID, including backlog of pending cases. And we have Jackie Curry here, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Patrick Gilbert with the state's attorney's office.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 102-2021.
To move.
Got a motion by Mr. Hastings. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Ackley. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, Resolution Number 102-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 102-2021 passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Ms. Hurley?
Next is Resolution Number 103-2021. This is to authorize the hiring of a victim witness coordinator within the state's attorney's office, to enhance the mission of the office, and to help resolve the backlog of pending cases, and to make a supplemental appropriation from contingency to provide funding for the victim witness coordinator position.
I need a.
Can I say something?
I'm sorry?
Can I say something before you?
Yes, go ahead.
This resolution of hiring someone, we've never even discussed the particulars of this person that they're hiring. And I think this is the first time that we ever hired someone through a resolution without a public hearing and so forth. And I mean, we, they put this in here, but we'd never discussed this with the state's attorney, as far as what this victim witness coordinator is going to do. I think we need to table it until we get more information on this, because this is the first time something like this has come up in a resolution.
One clarification. We're not hiring the individual. We're authorizing that hiring for the state's attorney's office, and the state's attorney makes her, makes her own hire.
It's still going to come through the county's money, through contingency.
Right, but we're only authorizing that this position be.
To be, to be brought in. Usually that goes through a public hearing. It doesn't come through resolution.
Well, we've, we've, I think Mrs. Hurley has sent emails out in reference to the structures, whether it's a resolution or it's a legislative bill, and we, it was decided that it, through legal, that it could be a resolution.
Well, we haven't discussed it.
Well, I make a motion, if you want, but you have a, are you making a motion to table? Because I.
Yes.
Make a motion for, for the resolution yet.
Is it appropriate for his motion to go through first, before we make a motion?
Made a motion to table.
I think that motion needs to be made, whether it's to table or to introduce.
All right. We have a motion to table by Councilmember Ernie Davis. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, if that's.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on tabling?
No discussion.
No discussion?
No.
Yes, sir.
There's no discussion on the table.
All right.
Unfortunately.
All right. Do we have a vote? All in favor of the amendment or the motion to table, please say aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Can we have a roll call? Mr. McCain?
You give him a second.
What's that?
I'll give an aye to table.
To table it?
Aye to table.
Aye to table. Mr. Cannon?
No.
Mr. Hastings?
Aye.
To table. Ms. Ackley?
No.
Mr. Davis, to table. Mr. Holloway?
No.
No. And Chair votes no. What is that vote?
Three.
Four to three, not to ta, not to table.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 103-2021.
We got a motion to approve Number 103-2021. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who made the second? It sounded like it came from my right. Okay, Mr. Hastings made the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Yes, sir?
Good morning, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name's Patrick Gilbert. Ms. Dykes is unfortunately unable to be here.
I was wondering where she was.
She is probably right now, actually, giving an opening statement next door in a murder trial. So she is regretful that she's not able to be here. I'm the Chief of the Prosecution Integrity Unit, and I'd like to thank you guys for hearing this resolution today. And if, if the council would indulge me, I'd just like to very briefly talk about how central victim witness coordinators are to the work of our office. I was hired from the public defender's office, where I had served as a public defender for about seven years before I came over here. And I don't think, I guess I knew on an intellectual level, but I don't think I really appreciated how much administrative effort goes into proving a case, to setting up a case in front of a jury. It's, you know, I'm sure everyone has had this experience where you're trying to set up a meeting, and you're trying to get everyone's schedules, and this person can't be here then, and this person's not available in the afternoon. It's like that, except the meeting is as important as it could possibly be, and everyone absolutely needs to be there. The thing that our prosecutors do best is legal work. It's preparing for trial. It's going to trial. It's writing motions. It's litigating issues. It's identifying and fulfilling what justice means in any particular case. Victim witness coordinators are, in a sense, the most effective force multipliers our office has. They shoulder the administrative burden of coordinating schedules, of reminding witnesses about upcoming hearings and court dates, and that's to say nothing about their crucial work in keeping victims involved and informed in the prosecution of their case, or of cases that involve them. Right now, due to COVID-19, cases are being postponed. They are being rescheduled, sometimes at the last minute, sometimes the morning of trial. And every time a case gets continued, the process of assembling these pieces has to begin brand new. We have to send out new subpoenas. We have to get schedules. If a victim is out of town, or is, has some other obligation, we have to file motions to get rescheduled. We have to talk to victims, explain to them why their case has been going on for 18 months, has been going on for two years, why this sort of nightmare that they find themselves in continues to keep getting postponed. Right now, our prosecutors are dealing with caseloads that are in some instances twice as high as they were in 2019. And every minute they spend coordinating schedules, signing subpoenas, is a minute they're not spending preparing for trial. And it's only through the commitment and dedication of every employee of the office of the state's attorney, and their willingness to do whatever it takes to get the job right, done right, that the results to the community haven't suffered. Again, I just want to stress how central victim witness coordinators are to our mission, and that they really are force multipliers. Right now, in our Circuit Court Division, we have one victim witness coordinator assigned to 12 and 1/2 prosecutors. That's over 800 cases that this single victim witness coordinator is responsible for. An additional victim witness coordinator would greatly help our prosecutors focus on what they're best at, and help us to better keep crime victims informed and involved at a time when it's desperately needed. I'd ask the council to consider voting in favor of this resolution, creating a new victim witness coordinator position. It comes at a cost of, I believe, $28,000 out of the contingency fund that is prorated for the balance of the fiscal year. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have about this resolution, or about the work of our office generally.
Mr. Hastings?
I supported a motion to table, just to, so we could have State's Attorney, Ms. Dykes actually here, but I appreciate you being here, Mr. Gilbert. Question I had, so the, we didn't get a chance to actually discuss this, was we were just going to be in closed session for a while, and then came out in another session, so we didn't get the full detail of this. The $28,930, I'm assuming that's not a full-time position, because that'd be less than minimum wage, right? So what is this going to be, one position? How's that, how are the funds being?
It's one position, 32 hours a week, Monday through Thursday. The position, so we've identified a candidate that, that in our office's estimation is remarkably well-qualified, formerly employed by the Salisbury Police Department for a great length of time, has a wonderful reputation in the community, and is, is just phenomenal working with people. This individual would not need benefits, and I think would greatly assist our mission. And again, so this, this is, I think, to answer your question, this would be a quasi-part-time 32-hour, Monday through Thursday position.
And the full salary that they'd be getting would be?
The full salary is $34,650. This is just for the remainder of the fiscal year. The amount is.
Right. Any more questions or comments? I do want to say I appreciate the motion and the amendment on tabling this. It would be nice to have more information, but I do know that the state's attorney's offices and the courts are backlogged, and if some of you remember, State's Attorney Dykes gave a tour prior to COVID, and she stated then that they needed a victim witness coordinator, and that was well over a year ago. So I think it's important that we do pass this resolution. Any more comments? All right. All in favor of Resolution Number 103-2021, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Yeah, one nay. Did we hear from Mr. McCain?
He said aye.
Aye, okay. So it passes six to one. Thank you all very much. Ms. Hurley?
The next item for business is Resolution Number 104-2021. This is amending the fiscal year 2022 budget to reallocate $16,000 of funding within the state's attorney's office salary account.
Right. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 104-2021.
To move.
Got a motion by Mr. Cannon. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Holloway. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, Resolution Number 104-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 104-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
Next, for your consideration, is Resolution Number 105-2021. This is to implement a signing bonus for certain law enforcement veteran applicants in the sheriff's office. And we have Captain Todd Richardson here, if there are any questions.
Excuse me? Did he get a promotion?
Demoted.
Ms. Hurley demoted you?
I apologize, Major.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Yes.
Yes, good morning, Cap.
First, I'll need a motion. Did we have a motion on this yet?
Nay.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 105-2021.
To move.
And a second.
Second.
All right. Now, Major.
This is a one-time bonus that's been designated for three individuals that we've sought out to recruit. It's a $1,500 bonus. It's making up for a $4,500 Academy cost, and basically nine months of salary that we would pay to a recruit before we got the first full day of work from. We're recruiting from other agencies. This allows us to have them ready to go to work in eight weeks, basically. So the money is, the savings is over $45,000 per deputy that we could hire that was previously certified.
So this is a bonus for an officer with experience, but not somebody about to go through the academy?
Correct. These people have already been certified, already been working, already been working numerous years as a police officer, so their training time would be very limited, well, what was required by the Maryland Police Training Commission, which is 80 hours of field training. Once they've learned our system, then they would be ready to work.
Any more questions for Major? Mr. Hastings?
Just clarity on the source of the funds. We had the previous discussion about federal funds coming down. Will this be federal or out of general?
This is straight out of savings for empty positions this year.
Mr. Holloway?
So, so this is out of savings from salary positions?
Correct. We're currently seven positions down right now.
Something we spoke of before. This is a great savings due to the fact that you do now have to go through the training. Are these officers coming from Maryland? Are they all from Maryland, so there won't be any issues with transferring from another state, as far as the laws and things like that go?
No. When you come from another state, you have to go through what's called comparative compliance, and it's been extended to the point where it's almost a full academy now.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, sounds good.
I do want to say that just last week, I saw a department in Maryland that was offering a $10,000 sign-in bonus, and.
Right in front of me, that's very local, that's offering $10,000.
Yes, $1,500 isn't much. And we're going to vote to support this, but I would like to see us offer more, as well as look for creative ways to return, retain the deputies that we already have, so we don't lose them. Any more questions or comments? All in favor of Resolution Number 105-2021, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 105-2021 passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution Number 106-2021. This is reactivating the Wacomiko County Commission for Women.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 106-2021.
To move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 106-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 106-2021 passes unanimously. Mr. Hitchens? Mr. Hitchens?
Good morning. I call your attention to Resolution 107-2021, accepting the audit report on the Wycomico County fuel system.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 107-2021.
It's a move.
Got a motion from Mr. Hastings. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Cannon made it a second. Do we have any discussion?
I have a quick presentation.
Yes, go ahead with your presentation.
The county uses both WEX and pumps at the Roads Division to provide fuel for county vehicles. The county-owned pumps are for off-road vehicles and equipment. The focus of this audit was on the WEX program, which allows employees to purchase fuel from almost any gas station. During the nine-month period I tested, the county purchased approximately 241,000 in fuel over about 7,300 transactions. Five departments accounted for 90% of fuel. That's sheriffs, roads, wrecking parks, solid waste, and corrections. I provided four items in the findings and recommendations section of the audit. The first is regarding odometer entry. The WEX program flags transactions that have an out-of-order odometer at the time of purchase, but it doesn't decline it. I would recommend departments monitor their invoices for incorrect odometer entries and implement corrective actions for users with repeated incorrect entries. The second is regarding improper fuel grade purchases. About 1 and 1/2% of our fuel purchased was a higher grade than the manufacturer recommends. Therefore, over the nine months, it cost us about an extra $1,000 in unneeded fuel costs. My recommendation is to strictly use the fuel recommended by the vehicle manufacturer. The third is entry of the vehicle fuel tank capacity into the WEX system. It has a field that allows us to say, this vehicle has a 20-gallon capacity. This allows them during their review to see if there's a purchase for 30 gallons. Obviously, those 30 gallons didn't go into a 20-gallon tank, so it's a good measure for compliance. And finally, based on the meetings with the various departments, the monthly review process varies greatly, so I recommend that the county create a uniform monthly review process for each department to follow. And management did indicate in their comments they will establish that review system. So I would like to thank management and staff from all the departments I met with for their cooperation.
All right. Mr. Holloway?
I guess my question is on this, you know, going back to the landfill theft years ago, you know, fuel has always been an issue that needed to be closely guarded. How come it's not being been done? Was there any reason why? Why it wasn't, you know, your recommendations being followed already, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, the recommendations are followed for the most part. I mean, you're just talking about a handful of odometer entries and premium fuels, but unlike the happening that, what was that, 2008, 2009? I mean, this has a much lower risk of hitting that scale. You're having to go to public fueling stations. You're not able to get a tanker just to come in and everyone show up on Saturday and start pumping fuel to, you know, outrageous amount. I believe that this system kind of curtails that risk, honestly, more than having a central fuel tank.
Okay.
Mr. Cannon?
A very good report, and I hope that you recommend, I'm sure your recommendations will be taken into consideration because they were excellent recommendations. The WEX program, in buying fuel through that program, how much more is it costing us than purchasing the same fuel through the county system?
It ends up being about five to seven cents more.
Gallon?
Yeah, per gallon. So in this case, oh, man, I would have to do the, I didn't do the math on that.
Can you get back to us on?
Sure, absolutely.
But I'd like to know, because it seems to me like it's an awful, it's a large increase in expenses.
Well, there, so that would be the tangible increase, but the intangible decrease would be you don't have deputies driving across the county to a central fueling station. So if they're on the east side of the county, they're not having to drive to the west side of Salisbury to get fuel. They can simply stop where they are. So you end up having a decrease in unproductive hours where you're simply driving through the county to get fuel again, as well as the mileage that you're putting on the vehicle to go back to the Roads Division. If we had, say, you know, four or five pumps stationed around the county, then that would certainly change that situation. But most people don't, or most employees don't have a reason to go to Roads, you know, other than to get fuel. So they would be sort of going out of their way. So that's not really able to be measured very well or economically, but that's just something else to keep in mind, is that that increased cost, but you may be gaining some productivity.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. That was a good question. Didn't we used to have a contract with that vendor on Eastern Shore Drive?
You're talking about?
Toco.
What is it?
I think it's called Toco, something like that.
Or Pacific Pride?
Yeah, one of those.
When they were looking at WEX, they actually had looked out, sought out other vendors, and during that time when they were getting WEX, my understanding was those companies did not get back to them, which was surprising since we have a pretty large fleet.
Yeah, I think that five cents a gallon makes a difference, and it would be another location for the deputies to go. And I understand that the deputies, if they're on one end of the county, would have to drive all the way across the other end of the county, or at least the center of the county, but you said Parks and Recs and other departments are utilizing that or spending that much.
Right, well, looking at my report again, I did cite that there was 110,000 gallons pumped in that nine-month period. So over that nine-month period, it would be five to six, $7,000.
And maybe this isn't a question for you, it may be a question for Roads or whomever. I'm wondering whether it would benefit the county to have tanks in other locations. That could be a huge expense, just trying to go through the environmental issues, I'm sure.
Right, yeah, that would be a huge expense, I would say.
All right. Any more questions or comments? All right. All in favor of Resolution Number 107-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 107-2021 passed unanimously. Mr. Hitchens?
All right. I call your attention to Resolution 108-2021, accepting the audit report on Wycomico County purchase cards.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 108-2021.
It's a move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Hitchens?
Yep. The county uses Bank of America-branded purchase cards, which streamline the procurement process and reduces administrative costs. I also looked at a nine-month period examined for this. The purchase cards had nearly $1,350,000 in activity. That was about 7,500 transactions, which averaged $180 apiece. Department procedures for physical documentation varies with the size of the department. Larger departments tend to have a more formal process with more levels of sign-offs. I did find that the department procedures to be well-designed for purchase approvals. In this audit, I provide three findings and recommendations. The first is electronic transaction sign-offs. I reviewed physical documentation across various departments and found the proper ink signatures on all transactions indicating they were approved by the department head. I tested specifically for electronic sign-offs by a director for their accountants and deputies and found those sign-offs 51% of the time. There were also a number of instances where directors did not receive electronic sign-off from the Director of Administration or Finance Director. The transactions seem to have physical documentation, but to adhere to the purchase card manual, I recommend assuring all transactions are appropriately signed off in the works program. Management indicated in their response they agree electronic sign-offs are integral to the control environment. The second is regarding comments in the works program. We had 7,500 transactions. About 2,500 did not include comments. The comment section allows the purchaser to explain their transaction and expedite the final approval process. I recommend transactions do not receive final approval until adequate comments are provided. Management is in agreeance that comments are a necessary part of proper documentation. Finally, I reviewed line item allocations for purchases. I compiled a list and found a number of transactions that may need to be reviewed for proper allocation. The Finance Department serves as the final approver for P-card transactions, and I would recommend they adopt a system to review the allocations and make recommendations if inappropriate. Again, management agrees further review for account allocation is warranted. Management is also working to implement a training program for department heads, P-card users, and support personnel to update them on county policies and procedures. Nick Rice did send out an email last week with some guidelines based on this report. Management was overall in agreements in their management comment. So I would like to thank management and staff from across the entire county I met with for their cooperation.
All right. Questions or comments from Mr. Hitchens? Mr. Hastings?
I just want to say, great work, as always. That's a ton of transactions, and I always appreciate your analysis, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, in your testing, do you actually pull, I know you get the credit card receipt. Have you actually pulled receipts from the business that, other than gas, because we know what gas is, but say they went to Dollar General or Farm Supply? Did you test any of those to see if they were appropriate purchases?
Yeah, I did look at, like, a month of transactions from, nine months of transactions, and actually got the copies of the receipts. And that was sort of along the lines of the finding about the allocation. So I did look at them for reasonableness, for whether that makes sense or not. So I guess, in short, as a short answer, yes. I did examine physical receipts, and they're itemized.
What was the percentage per department or whatever? Did you do six per department or 10 or?
I picked each department, I did an entire month of their, so it varied based upon the department. One department, it was 73 receipts for that month.
I see.
So it just, I just picked random departments and then took their entire month.
All right, thank you.
Any more? Mr. Ackley?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for you. So the departments like the liquor licensing board, elections, state's attorneys, sheriffs, do they have, is there a final sign-off with the executive administration, or does that go to the director of their department and stop there?
So it depends on who the purchaser is. So if you're, say, just a staff employee, then it goes to, you have a proxy in the department who will sign off on it, and then the department head. If it's the department director, their accountant or proxy signs off on it, and then it goes to either Pam or John. So for the most part, it stays within the department, but all receipts are sent to Finance for final review and sign-off from the person designated in Finance.
Those departments that aren't necessarily county departments, but they're county-funded, that's the same process?
Same process.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon?
Mr. Hitchens, you have, what, maybe a three-month follow-up procedure?
Yeah.
On your recommendations?
Yes. So I'm probably looking at February or March. I'll follow up, because that would give them time to get everything moving, because if I do it in three months, then I really wouldn't have a very big sample size, because if I go back and only look at July to September, then, you know, well, we didn't know about this until, you know, October or September. So I'm probably looking at about February or March.
To do a follow-up? And you'll share that with?
Absolutely.
And executive, thanks.
Good. Any more questions? Ms. Harley?
I just have more of a comment. The external auditors also pull the purchase cards receipts each year when they come in to do our audit. And they pick a certain month, and you don't know from year to year what month that is.
Sure.
So just so you know, I mean, it's not only the internal auditors looking at them, but the external auditors as well.
All right. Any more questions? Mr. Hitchens, thank you for those two audits. I know you did a lot of work on those, and we look forward to the follow-ups, and I'm confident the county will consider your recommendations, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All in favor of Resolution Number 108-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 108-2021 passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Hitchens. This time, we're going to move on to public comments. Please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. Any presented material must be, or may be submitted to the council members. Please include 10 copies if you do. No derogatory comments, personal attacks, obscene language, et cetera. Do we have any public comments? Yes, sir?
Yes, Darren Lombardo, Wycomico County. Good morning, counsel. I came here to talk to you this morning about my comment before the Board of Education last night. Very concerning. Wanted to read to you from COMAR 13A010506.A. Decisions of a local board involving a local policy or a controversy and dispute regarding the rules and regulations of the local board shall be considered prima facie correct, and the state board may not substitute its judgment for that of a local board unless the decision is arbitrary, unreasonable, or illegal. The decisions that the Board of Ed has made regarding mandates is absolutely illegal. Anyone will tell you that. The board attorney will tell you that. He won't, he will tell them that that is illegal. I've consulted with many attorneys that, both state, federal, and constitutional, that is absolutely illegal. State attorneys in the state have said it is illegal. There's only one condition on this COMAR, and that is, the state could overrule the Board of Education if they're not of a sound mind. Now, perhaps some people think the Board of Ed is not of a sound mind. I think they're of a sound mind, and it's very dangerous for a state to make a psychological evaluation of any governing body and overrule them. Now, what they've allowed is a Trojan horse to come into our county, and as a council, you should be very concerned, because subverting their power against your authority and coming in like that, they will do the same to you. And so one of the things that I want to say is that we should have our council, our council should be protecting our citizens. And it doesn't matter which position you're in, whether you're for masking, against masking, for immunization, against immunization. We're talking about choice. We're talking about force, pinning someone down and saying, you do this or else. That's a problem. And in the name of civil rights, in the name of civil liberties, we have a big problem, and it's going to fester into something greater. And that's what I'm concerned about. And so I would ask the council and their legal representation to protect this county, file injunctions, file appeals to the state, whatever it takes to protect the citizens because it's an absolute overreach. Now, in the school system, things have gone on that maybe some of you are aware or not aware of. Children have been vaccinated without parental consent. They've been coerced into doing it, and a child is a minor. They are not in a capacity to make those choices, and that's why they have parents. And the state, the county, the school system, other organizations have taken it in their hands to be the parents of our children, and it's unacceptable, and we're not going to stand for it. So I am pleading with you today, pleading with you. We need your help. People are seeing their elected officials not stepping up to the plate. People are seeing their elected officials playing politics instead of looking at the humanitarian issues. And it's not about my opinion or your opinion or anything. I don't care if you're a Democrat, you're a Republican, Libertarian, it doesn't matter. There's a humanitarian component that says you do not take anyone and force them to adhere to something. And so regardless, it's not about debate. It's about the civil rights and liberties of people. The state had absolutely no jurisdiction to come in here and do what they did, and everyone knows it. And last night, the board unanimously voted to adopt what the state did, and in doing so, they have translated liabilities unto themselves, and it is a big problem. But again, I plead with you and ask you to do the right thing, and all that is right, and I thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Do you have any more public comments? Yes, sir?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Delegate Carl Anderson, blessed to represent Wycomico County. I bring greetings on behalf of the remainder of the delegation who could not be here. I wanted to provide you a brief update from our last meeting. We were left with some questions that I wanted to get some answers for, and some was pertaining to ditch cleaning in different areas of the county. Nanticoke Road at Willow Creek, they have approval from Willow Creek Road to Levin de Shille Road for state highway. Nanticoke Road at Capitola, there are no complaints have been issued, but they will investigate it. Nanticoke Road to Upper Ferry. Nanticoke Road to Upper Ferry, the site is in the works. They anticipate approval for ditching and cleaning before the end of the month. Areas on Nanticoke Road down in Bi-Valve from Weddipkin to Nebo Road, Route 50 and Civic Avenue, they're going to do ditching and pipe cleaning from Civic Avenue East to Dove Point. So a lot of these areas are now under consideration to get an approval to get done. Absolutely welcome. The other question that was raised was the, the weight restrictions on the two bridges, Route 13. It is rated for 60,000 or 80,000 pounds, and also there are no weight restrictions on the two bridges at the end of Route 12, Snow Hill Road, as they, near Main Street. So if there are other detailed questions, you are certainly encouraged to reach out to state highway directly to get any other detail. Both bridges have been maintained and are in great working condition. No, absolutely, of course. But again, personally, I just wanted to say it was great seeing so many people at the Folk Festival this past weekend, or I guess two weekends ago now. You know, I, I saw Councilman Davis and Councilman McCain, Councilwoman Ackley, Councilman Hastings out there. I'm sure the rest of y'all are out there. It was just so many people, it was just hard to see everybody. But it was just a really, it was a, it was a great time, great weather, and, you know, so we'll, we'll get, I guess we'll get another bite at the apple next year, too. So, again, we'll keep working on this. The other issues were going up, and we'll get answers, and we look forward to meeting again in November. Hopefully, we can pull together a meeting with the delegation, the county council, and representatives from the eight municipalities. It would be nice for members on each end of the delegation to know what's going on across the county, and for all of us as well. They may have issues similar to these that we could address pretty easily if we're made aware of them all at one time. So, again, thank you so much. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you, Delegate Anderton. You've got five seconds left on your three-minute mark. Thank you for the update.
Go Ravens!
Thank you. Any more public comments?
We're set for three minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Ashanti.
Welcome.
I reside in Wycomico County. And I think we're still in mourning. Good morning to everyone. I stand in support of masking in school. We just heard a report from the health officer of this county saying that we're the fourth lowest in vaccination in Maryland, if I wrote that right, and that also that, she gave some other information about, that we're the fourth highest in positivity rate in Maryland. So I don't think that this is a time that we should be doing less, especially with masking, because we don't know how many people that had the vaccination in school or anywhere else. So I think masking is the least that we can do. And I don't think, from things that I hear, that children are so dissatisfied with masking. I think the parents are making more to do about nothing. So I'm in support of that. The other thing I'll mention is, and I see that we will hear about the water and sewer master plan. It's urgent that, that Wycomico County have county-wide water and sewer, sewer. It's urgent. It's been much too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments? Any more public comments? Okay, council comments. Ms. Ackley.
I'd like to first thank Delegate Anderton for taking care of the, the ditches and roads on the west side. We greatly appreciate it out there. I also wanted to thank Dr. Catherine Jones and Dr. Briante de Shields. They approached me several months ago on bringing back the Wycomico County Commission on Women. The three of us, we sat down, we brainstormed, we came up with some community needs, how we can address them, and we approached the county executive. And so I'm, I'm, I'm pleased and I'm happy that they, that Mr. Posoda and Council President Dodd were able to move that forward.
Thank you. Any more council comments?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway.
Delegate Anderton, we've had meetings in the past few years at the airport, Mount Herman Road and Airport Road, about the ditches that wasn't on your list. I know I've had, I've actually had meetings with-
Yeah. All I, all I had was the list that was given to us at the last council meeting. But if you want to add that to it-
Could you do that, please?
I will.
The airport and, Airport Road and Mount Herman Road area. State ditches there, they're higher than the tiles in some places.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll write that on this list right now, and we'll get you an answer.
All right. Any more council comments? Mr. Hastings.
Well, actually, while Delegate Anderton is here, I will say the, the council of government's idea that was brought up to try to bring together municipalities and, and the council, I think that would be a great idea, and I don't know how we advance that or who, the , with the elite individual, but I, I think that's a positive idea, and I'd be happy to see that. And the, the only thing, other comment I really had was just, I want to say happy anniversary to my wife. She's amazing. Two years.
Tell her happy anniversary from the entire council. Any more comments? All right. I do want to thank everyone for attending. I want to thank Delegate Anderton for his follow-up comments, and Mrs. Ashanti, thank you for recognizing the importance of county-wide water and sewer. We're long overdue, and I think we're going to have an important update coming up soon. On September 11th, which was, I guess, two weekends ago, Ms. Hurley, Ms. Sandy, their husbands, Ms. Ackley and I, were at the 75th anniversary of the Parks, Recs, and Tourism, and it was a nice event, and we offered a proclamation, and then I thanked all the employees of those departments for the hard work that they do, and also recognized the commission for the past 75 years that have been working on that. Also, I think you guys may have seen a lot of motorcycles around here this past week. We had Delmar the Bike Week at the Shorebird Stadium, and it's a big event for the county. It brings in a lot of visitors, they spend a lot of money. There are a lot of motorcycle accidents. I don't know what the cause was, but I ride a bike, and I was cut off numerous times, and several times I went around to see what was going on, and they had a cellphone in their hand. So please be careful out there. It's not just motorcycles that are getting run over, they're hitting vehicles, and the, the advent of the cellphone is, is a bad thing for drivers. It's killed a lot of people. So please be careful out there on the cellphones. Tonight, the Wycomico County Volunteer Firemen's Association is, I believe, is meeting in the west side, and this starts at 7:00 PM if any of the council members want to attend. And, Ms. Ackley, congratulations on your Commission on Women. I'm glad you were interested in moving it forward, so thank you for that. All right. Need a motion and a second to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions. Do we have a motion?
To move.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.